Notice is hereby given that a meeting of the City Council Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, will be held on Monday, December 12, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of discussing an ordinance relative to home occupation and claims. This meeting will be held in person at City Council chambers at 93 Washington Street, second floor, and via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022. In-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, and the public may also participate, listen, and/or view this meeting while in progress via the remote participation platform Zoom through any one of the following ways: Click on the link, post it in the agenda to join the webinar, webinar ID 844-7258-8632, and password 845446, or via telephone 877-853-5257. Enter webinar ID and password. The subcommittee meetings are held to take action for the purpose of making recommendations to full council. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the city asylum's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceeding as soon as possible after the meetings. Notice that this meeting was posted on December 2, 2022, at 7:27 a.m. This meeting is recorded. In attendance this evening are Councillor Cohen, Councillor Varela, and Councillor Dominguez. We also have Councillor Presnisky joining us remotely. And I do see we have Councillor Marcelo as well from Committee of the Whole, and Councillor Watsonfeldt from Committee of the Whole. I'll promote you to panelists. There we go. Thank you. So thanks for joining us for our last Ola meeting of 2022. Tonight's two agenda items are claims and an ordinance relative to home occupation. So tonight is going to be a discussion evening. So two items to discuss. First, we'll discuss the ordinance relative to home occupations. I'll give a brief background. This was submitted by Councillor Mador in November of '21 to make an amendment to our accessory use home occupation in our ordinances. Any actual change that we propose will have to go through the joint public hearing process. So the point of the committee meetings, that we did hold one over the summer initially to bring this topic up for the first time, we're holding a second one. I'm kind of considering this a check-in to see what we've done, what else we need to do, where we might want to go with forming this ordinance, and then hopefully in the new year, we will have a drafted ordinance that we can submit that would then go to the joint public hearing process, which we're all quite familiar with, as we just went through, I believe, eight of those last year. So that's where we are now with this. We'll take up the ordinance relative to home occupation first, and I know that Councillor Varela has been actively involved in this and helped craft a PowerPoint to help guide our conversation this evening. So if the committee is okay, and there's no objection, I think perhaps we could just jump right into that and start having some conversation and review there. Okay, cool. I can pull it up on my computer and screen share. Awesome. Cool. Great. Okay, so I'll actually, if you don't mind, I'll do these two, because I popped these in right before. I just wanted to give a current state where we are now with our home occupations. So our current home occupation ordinance, or I'm sorry, our current home occupation use for the city asylum is listed under an accessory use for residential, which makes sense, and it is listed that a special permit is required for those -- I can't see my screen, I'm sorry. So professional offices and other home occupations involving the use of a room or rooms in a dwelling to carry on activities in which goods, wares, or merchandise are not commercially created or handled may be authorized by special permit. So all of the zones are special permit, except for the business where it's not applicable, provided that the home occupation is operated entirely within a dwelling unit with no visible display from the street, shall not -- shall be operated only by the residents of the dwelling unit and not more than one regular employee not residing in the dwelling unit, shall utilize not more than 25% of the gross floor area, and shall display not more than one non-electronic announcement sign of an area not greater than 1 and 1/2 square feet and attached against the building and not protruding there from. So that's our current state. And then what was submitted to Ola, I'm just putting a Snapchat, because it was just one page that was submitted, was to change the zoning chart, so allowing for the residential zones to allow those items, the home occupation, allowed by right, as long as the four items are covered, but they are slightly changed. So one of the items that was changed was that it shall be operated only by residents of the dwelling unit. So our current existing one is resident of the dwelling unit plus one non-resident. That was what was submitted to Ola and has kind of kicked off of all of these conversations as to where we are today. We want to discuss, is this what we want? What are other options, you know, are we possibly changing, and what we're learning from there? On that note, I will pass it to Councillor Varela.
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. So yes, to kind of brush up on where we left off, I was able to really look and take a deep dive into home occupation, and specifically look at a lot of the materials that Ms. Chiancola gave to us as well, mostly cited from the American Planning, I'm sorry, the American Planning Association. So thank you for that, Amanda. And I really think at this time, since between planning, our building department, and just our conversations that we've had thus far, there's a lot of disconnect and confusion on the direction we need to go in with home occupation. So this next slide here, so we're going to start with very basic, what, on a planning's perspective, what would be talked about on how to craft a zoning, a home occupation ordinance? I'll be very brief. Any occupation or business use full or part-time conducted within a dwelling or accessory structure or by both a resident or property. So this is always going to be incidental or an accessory use to the primary use, which is going to be people living in the residence. This ordinance should, that we want, based on the impact of the business and the integrity of the character of the neighborhood. As we all know, you know, that's the biggest concern, is the quality of life for the neighbors while we have our other neighbors enacted in home occupation. Concerning enforcement, this ordinance, the definitions of compliance is meant to be used for a reactive enforcement, and this is the responsibility of the surrounding homeowners to bring offenders to the attention of the zoning enforcement department and determine the enforcement. So the key to this is reactive. No zoning enforcement officer is going to go around inspecting homes for compliance. So it's really about policing of the neighbors themselves. Next slide, please. So when we talk about the general standards of an ordinance that we want to craft and create here in Salem, they come down to two basic, very simple principles. The appearance, there shall be no exterior evidence that the building is being used for any purpose other than a dwelling or accessory structure. This protects the visual quality of life for the neighborhood. And also the activity, the home occupation shall not cause any odor, dusk, smoke, vibration, heat, glare, electromagnetic interference, which can be detected beyond the property line. Looking into 38 environmental justice communities that have home occupation ordinances, this is one of the fundamentals that all home occupation ordinances have. So again, what a lot of municipalities and cities do is put a little more on that. So next slide, please. So these are more specific, and this is where it gets a little more complicated. Parking, off-street parking, so this is basically a recommendation on planning on how it should be handled. Off-street parking should be provided by the homeowner where necessary to handle all vehicle visits authorized under specific traffic classifications. If there's a question whether off-street parking is necessary, shall the zoning administrator make that determination? Obviously something we have to talk about. What are the concerns? Should it ultimately be based on generating more than usual traffic in a neighborhood? If parking is needed, should it be the full responsibility of the business to provide such parking in a public right-of-way? These are all considerations to take into account while crafting our own home occupation ordinance. And then the one very simple one is storage. Very simply, the storage of equipment or explosive materials outside. The one thing about home occupation that is a really, that really we have to take into consideration is how the look of storage outside of homes. Most home occupation, all, I'm sorry, all home occupation should be handled within the dwelling unit. Next slide, please. And then again, a little more on this, the operator, the business should have conducted a full-time resident of the property. The concern here is that if you don't have a full-time resident, you may not be attuned to the community that surrounds you. Again, just holding people accountable. Square-foot usage, this is something that's pretty standard, but I found this interesting that most communities have adopted 25% of the square-foot gross floor area to be used for home occupation. But what I find interesting is, how do you enforce this? Is this even enforceable? And I know through a lot of these documents I've been looking at, not only is it next to impossible to enforce, how is some going to know? And is it really affecting the quality of life of the neighbors? Next slide, please. So looking at this, I really had to look at how do we narrow down municipalities and cities in the Commonwealth that are similar to Salem? So what I did here is we took environmental justice populations here in Massachusetts. We have 38 communities that meet all the criteria of minority-driven income and English isolation. So within that, we narrowed it down to 18 communities within the population of 35,000 and 65,000, respectively. Salem's around the 44,000, 45,000, so that's kind of within that. As you can see, 1 through 4, it really identifies what makes up an environmental justice population. Next slide, please. So here, I was able to really get down and figure out how home occupation is utilized in these municipalities and cities, in towns, sorry, and how they handle it. And as you can see, it's somewhat all over the map. What I find interesting is that when it comes to gross floor area, that's really up to, it's around, it's going to be a quarter of the use. Some cities require 400 square feet or 25 gross feet, 25% gross floor area, whichever is less. But if we really look at the, these, these home occupations, it's really nuanced, and it really comes down to our city and what is best for us. So the things that I find a little concerning about looking into home occupation around the Commonwealth is the uses that are not allowed. And a lot of them are very specific to either, you have the city of Peabody, which allows by right home occupation, but not in a, I'm sorry, it's a, it's not a trailer park, it's basically a mobile, a mobile, a mobile home area. So when it comes to uses, a lot of cities and towns do not let or include barber shops or beauty parlors, and that's, that's the language within the ordinance. But what I find really interesting, and this is where we really need to consideration, is the city of Chelsea allows barber shops within limitations, because they understand that, you know, when it comes to the specific use of their residents, this is something that the city wants to see, or at least their residents. So I believe that the city of Chelsea was able to allow barber shops that require, I believe, three off-street parking spaces, and it has to be by appointment only. The reason I bring this up is, we really, when crafting our own home occupation ordinance, we really need to look into the nuances of our residents. It's not just about copying, pasting, and looking at other municipalities, it's about really crafting our own. I won't get too much into this, but when he, on the far right, these are all the, when it comes to parking and how these are regulated. Going back to the planning document, they really were advising that when it comes to parking, that off-street parking is not allowed, and that the home occupation business should facilitate the parking. Now, is this right for Salem? Is this something we feel that, you know, might be required in Salem? I don't know, and that's why we're having this conversation. What is reasonable for having an home occupation and allowing people to use off-street parking? That's going to be one of the hardest conversations we have. But moreover, you know, it's really about, you know, when we craft this, it's about looking into specific uses and what's allowed. The one thing we want to make sure is that if it's something reasonable, that we're not requiring our residents to go through the special permit granting authority, or the ZBA, or the, basically, it has to always, we want to watch that everything has to go through the zoning enforcement officer, because at that point, it's up to his discretion. Is that really fair to our residents? I think it really depends on the use. If we can go on, thank you. So this was presented to us by Kate Newhall-Smith of the Planning Department. She was able to give us some metrics on the surrounding and abutting cities and towns that have adopted home occupation. And as you can see, most have allowed by right, but there's always going to be limitations. And honestly, it really is just all over the place, and I think that after talking to the City Clerk of Revere, she felt that even their ordinance was a little outdated, and they needed to update it as well. So, you know, I think we can look at what our neighbors are doing for home occupation, but again, we need to make our own decisions on what's best for Salem. Next slide was going to be a couple other towns, Peabody, which we'll just quickly look at. Peabody and Swampscott. So, you know, they're allowed by right. One thing that seems like it's very apparent with most home occupations is, if it's over one employee, most of the time, if you want one, if you want more employees, if you want to do retail sales, you're always going to have to go through a special granting authority. But what we really need to look at is what kind of retail that would be. One thing that would be a little bit of an issue that we need to watch is, we just passed the urban agriculture ordinance, and we are allowing the retail sales of goods that are created on-site. And that's one thing that I really believe we need to allow, is if something's being commercially created on the premises, that should be allowed by right and should not have to go through a special granting permit authority. Next slide, please. Perfect. So with that, I think that's where we really need to start, is what's best for Salem, and do we get specific with the language and the uses, or do we keep it very simple? And I'll hand off to you. Thank you, Councillor Ricardi.
Thank you, Councillor Varela. Lots of research has gone into this over the past two months, and I appreciate the work by many that have done this. I know Beth Renard was unable to join this evening, but she also provided some insight along with Amanda Chiancola in the Planning Department and Kate Newhall-Smith, so I just want to say a quick thank you. And of course, Councillor Varela, to everyone that has put the research and time into this. So I made a few notes as we were going along of points that I think might help with the conversation this evening, to just kind of get a general idea with those that we do have with us tonight. It was kind of six buckets of topics that some might be pretty easy, we can glance over quickly, and then others, we're obviously going to have a conversation around. So there was the appearance and activity, those first two. So the appearance one, it seems, I think we actually have some existing language around that, that we could probably agree on, no exterior evidence of the business, no fitting, so help make sure that it fits within the quality or character of the neighborhood. Activity, the noise, sound, fumes, things like that. Again, we have existing ordinances around noise and fumes, and to make sure that any new business does not offend that at all. Parking, that's definitely one that we're going to want to go back and discuss more. Storage, I actually had a question about that one, so we could go back and discuss that one as well. Operators and employees, I mean, that was one that's already being, or was already asked to be amended, so we can go back and discuss that one. And then square-foot usage. So those, I think, are the four main topics that we want to kind of get where everyone's feelings are, parking, storage, employees, and square-foot usage. I also really liked the idea of like the restricted use, and like barber shop by appointment only. I was curious about what other restricted uses you might have seen there, and if they had the restricted use, did that mean they had to go through a permitting authority to get approval on that, or was that like part of the application process? And then with the retail sales piece, the only comment I'll make, like with urban agriculture, yes, we allow the retail sales on-site, but it's pretty restrictive, like it's restricted to just the weekends, it's only a certain number of weekends per year, certain hours, not exceeding X. So it does, like, yes, while it's allowed, it's, I think, a fairly restricted allowance of retail sales, so perhaps something that we can talk about as well. So those were just kind of the things that hopped out at me during the presentation. Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I apologize, I'm not going to go exactly with the six. I'll give you some of my ideas, I'll just go through them quickly. I'm not adverse to requiring off-street parking. I do feel like many of our neighborhoods are resident parking only. We have many neighborhoods, especially in the more congested areas or dense areas, that there is a difficulty for people who live in there on the street to park. Full-time resident, I'm all in favor of that, I think that makes sense. I think we should at some point explore prohibitive uses, you know, such as machinery that makes too much noise, maybe with a decibel level, something like that. As far as the 25% space, I know that it's hard to enforce, but I don't think it's a bad idea personally to have a rule that may be difficult to enforce, that when people go to the city and say, hey, can I do, you know, home occupation, and they're told they can only use 25%, I think, I think that may be a way to at least discourage larger ratio of their space. I just want to say, this is a lot like ADUs in my mind. We have hundreds of ADUs that are already in existence in, in many of our neighborhoods, and they're happening already. And enforcement is an equity issue to me. Like who, who gets enforced? Who is, you know, penalized? Is it, you know, the person who has an ADU in an affluent neighborhood? Probably less likely than someone who is in a more dense neighborhood. I also feel like we should explore, like we did with the urban agriculture ordinance, do people register? Do they pay a fee? A very nominal fee isn't going to, you know, make the city rich, but it may be something that we should consider as a way of tracking who's doing it, what kind of uses are being done. I do want to give an example, in my neighborhood, there's a person who I only got to know was doing a home occupation when I was canvassing, and has a detailing business. He's the only one who does, who works it. He lives in the, in the main house. It's actually in a detached space. It's not that visible from the street unless you pay attention, it's a very small sign. None of the neighbors that I've spoken to have an issue. Many of them didn't even know that he does it. And then when the North, Salem News did their Best of North Shore, ends up that he is the number-one detailer on the North Shore. So obviously doing a decent business. So those are my ideas. I feel like the lens we should be using is, how can we not only ensure neighborhood quality, how can we do the best we can to quantify what's being, you know, what kind of businesses are being done, where they're being done? And we should really use a lens of equity, because I do believe that there are plenty of home businesses happening all around the city, and the ones that, you know, are going to skate forever are the ones that have more affluent people or more highly, what we would consider more professional businesses. Thank you, Chair Stott.
Thank you. Councillor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Stott. So to answer a couple of those questions from Councillor Cohen, many cities require a fee through the clerk's office and a business certificate. So that's one way to track and make sure that, you know, require a business certificate that's ample enough and through the clerk's office, not the zoning enforcement. So I think that's a, that's a great point that I think possibly we should be enacting. I wanted to really quickly share with you the city of Chelsea when it comes to barber shops, for example. This is something that was written in, and I believe that they're very respectful on how they figured out how to do this. So with barber shops, are only, shall be only allowed in accessory use R1, R2 districts, subject to the conditions set forth in subsection of this following conditions. There should be a minimum of three off-street parking spaces on the lot, two additional required for primary use. There's a maximum of two chairs. There shall be separate means of egress for customers. Services shall be provided by appointment only, and hours of operation shall be limited to Monday through Saturday, 8 to 5. Barber shops shall be handicap accessible, and there shall be a bathroom separate from the living space. So I really think it shows how Chelsea has figured a way that this is a want and need with the city of Chelsea, and they figured out a way to do it. I will follow up, just wanted to make a record with Chelsea and see where they're at with how this has actually played out. But just a note, through the 17 environmental justice communities, there's about five or six of them that absolutely do not allow barber shops. So I really think that the Chelsea ordinance really speaks to them really tailoring it for their community. And again, with prohibited, prohibited uses, most of the prohibited uses that I've seen with these ordinances really come down to repair or painting of automobiles, storage of vehicles, letting of rooms or lodging, stable or kennel, which we already have language for in our animal ordinance, and as well as restaurants. So, you know, we do need to take into account, like, those are big uses, and I, and I think that those can kind of be reasonable to stay out of a customary home occupation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Dominguez.
Thank you, Chair Scott. Just a couple of questions that I have in regard to what we had in front of us. By the way, I want to thank Councillor Varela for great explanation, and I think this is a well overdue audience that we need to regulate here in Salem. However, I feel that, you know, the new normal in regard to how we do things now after COVID, create a discussion that need to be happened among the whole city, components, not only us as a city council, I know the chair mentioned that. This is just the beginning, and we're going to have a public hearing. I would like to hear the input from the public in general, to see how they feel on this ordinance that we had to draw, which I think is necessary. And I also like to see the city solicitor here, I know she wasn't able to be here, and the building inspectors, their input is very important in this, in this matter. My question to you, or to anyone that can answer me, is that how is going to be difference between home office and what we're discussing tonight? Because we know that many people who used to work in different places, they're now working from home, they have office in their home. What would be the difference between a home office and what we're discussing here tonight?
Yeah, I think the city solicitor did provide language for that. Councillor Varela, if you can? Yeah, I think the city solicitor did provide language for that. Counselor Varela, if you can?
She did. And I think the reason we're talking about this is because it's about something either being commercially created. Because here's the thing, we've seen an issue with our basically neighbors, you know, appealing either decisions by the zoning board of appeals that were deemed reasonable when that doesn't need to happen. So what I think the intent of this ordinance is that if it's a reasonable use, either while bringing in maybe clients or something being commercially created on the property, which also is going to basically impact most of our economically disadvantaged residents, we need to make sure that, you know, these uses are reasonable, that they're granted by right, and they do not require a special permit, because that's always the barrier we've seen thus far. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Watsonville.
Thank you, Chair Stott. Just to speak to Counselor Dominguez's question a little bit further. As I understand it, it has to do, so I am a full-time at-home employee of another company, and I work out of my home office, but I am not, as Counselor Varela just indicated, I'm not running my own business. I'm not using my address to run my business, therefore, you know, people aren't coming to my house. There's no deliveries, there's, you know, extra deliveries or anything like that. And so the difference between a home office and, I think what we're talking about here is the fully functioning of a separate business, which is different than I work for another person and I just happen to work from my home. I hope, is that helpful? Thank you.
The only difference between is, and you mentioned deliveries. And I know for a fact in my own company that I work at, that I worked some time, I receive a lot of deliveries from material they send to me. So that's, that's language need to be in place, so the distinction can be there so people understand. So I agree what's going on, that's what's my point. We need to make that separation and be clear so everybody is on the same page. That's what's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do, we'll get that language from the city solicitor. So and I'll make a note, too, that I knew the city solicitor was on vacation this week, but wanted to continue the conversation because she's been extremely helpful in providing her insight of once we know what we want to draft, and she drafted a version for us, as has the planning department. So I wanted to kind of back up first and be like, okay, what do we want to draft? Before we just keep having her here to draft meetings, so be a little more proactive about that. Counselor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I just want to also add that there's a significant difference between a retail establishment, which means someone actually bringing something in and reselling it, to somebody commercially creating something. So that's where the huge difference, and when we craft this ordinance, if that language is in there, it's going to make sure that home occupation doesn't really get out of hand, because commercially created something is very different. I also wanted to also discuss cottage food laws with the state. So the other issue we have is cottage food laws are allowed anywhere in the Commonwealth, but the barrier is always going to be local zoning. So with cottage food laws, the state will basically grant you a health permit to produce non-potentially hazardous foods. So anything from cookies, cakes, tamales without fillings, that's actually the, how it legally states it, amongst other things that are non-potentially hazardous. So with that, we do need to be careful and make sure that, you know, our residents are able to utilize cottage food laws, because they are reasonable, and that's something, again, commercially created within the home. It's not something that's retailed. So, you know, this is one of the things that, you know, our residents want to adopt this, but our local zoning prohibits it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. One piece that I keep going back to is like, we need to make some or have some conversations before we can kind of get to where we would want to be with the next thing. Like parking, for example, I think what our off-street parking requirement, if there is any, is really going to depend on what we're going to allow for use. So like if we allow retail use or we allow barber shops, we're going to really have to deep dive into that parking conversation. If we just straight off the board say no retail, no barber shops, then we probably don't really have to worry that much about the parking, because who's going to be coming to the business? Same with, there was the other one, there was another one that I was thinking of, employees. If we allow one outside resident as an employee, we would probably want to consider that or factor that in when we're talking about parking. If we're saying no, it's residence only, then again, that's off the table with parking. So I'm not quite sure really how to frame or collect that information, but these definitely all kind of spawn off of each other or affect one another when we're looking at this ordinance. Counselor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Stott. And I just wanted to add something real quick while we're writing this. What I've seen that's creatively been done with a couple of cities is instead of going through the ZBA process, not to say that it's a politicized process, but you have cities like Lynn and another one here, a city like Hollyoke, who, when it comes to a special permit, it actually goes through the city council as a special permit and not the zoning enforcement officer. So that's just another way to look at it. Is it a reasonable use? Would it be in the purview of the city council? Not making, I'm not saying I agree with it. I just think it's another way to make sure that it's not impacting our neighborhoods, because who's going to be more aware than anyone? It's, I believe it's our body that's elected here. Thank you.
Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, Chair Scott. I got a question in regard to the cities and towns that we had here. But any chance through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Watsonville, Varela, any information on any of the cities and towns limited the amount of site per neighborhood? They just leave it open to whoever apply for? Do you know? Do you have that information?
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
Is there limit, the limit, the amount, how many sites per neighborhood?
How many businesses? Through looking at 30 out of these ordinances, I have not seen anything restricting the amount.
I think so. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. I think when we reconvene with our new council, and this is before, yes, having the solicitor, having maybe some people who are conducting businesses, I also think we should involve traffic and parking. But one thing I wanted to bring up is, is something that was alluded to before, like if it's about neighborhood quality, and there is a business, for whatever reason, that is a nuisance, what is the recourse? So for example, like if someone is, is, you know, so I think we should make sure that when this ordinance is written, that we have a component to it that would say, you know, nuisances would go through the building inspector or whomever, okay? I think that's kind of important. I also feel that COVID has kind of maybe, you know, expanded the amount of people who are wanting to do business because they're not wanting to do what they did before in public. I know we even have some people who serve on our city boards who are very reluctant to do the board work in person because of their apprehension about being in public. So just some things to consider, but I do feel like we need to incorporate a recourse for neighbors or other residents in the building who may feel like this is, you know, infringing on their... And I'll turn the rest off to Counselor Watsonville.
Counselor Watsonville?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I was honest, I didn't mean to pop my hand up and be distracting. Apologies, Counselor. I was, I was actually just going to agree with everything that you just said. I know in Ward Two, there are some nuisance properties already, and I was wondering, you know, in addition to having the building inspector and legal present and the idea of traffic and parking being involved, but also potentially the community impact unit, someone from the community impact unit who regularly deals with and responds to nuisance properties. There is, I can speak to a couple of occasions in Ward Two where there is work going on on properties, which is hard to prove is happening, but is a nuisance to the neighborhood, and there's also intimidation factored in here. So I absolutely would agree with what Counselor Cohen suggested, that there be some sort of mapped out plan of recourse for neighbors. That having been said, I'm very much in favor of home occupation ordinances. I would, you know, I think we talk a lot in this chamber about the right balance between kind of over prescribing certain kinds of rules and regulations because they aren't enforceable or, you know, because enforcing them would be, is really challenging for whatever number of reasons, but versus like not having quite enough regulation, right? Like working towards whatever that balance is, is often a topic of conversation here. I think that's going to be, become a big part of this moving forward as well. You know, I don't, we wouldn't want, I would not want to over restrict, but I absolutely would also want to ensure that whatever restrictions or limitations we put in place, whether it be for public, you know, public safety or health or, you know, whatever the case may be, that that is really clearly delineated. And so I imagine one course of action might be to choose to dig into uses as a first step if there are any really serious outlying concerns. You know, I think it's funny, we talk a lot about barber shops tonight, and I think a lot of that has to do with, you know, the required health, the required health approach to how you handle utensils and your instruments and cleanliness and like all of that stuff. So as we get into, which is not to say I don't think it can be done, right? Obviously, I think places are doing it well. I just think if maybe we were to attack that, that list of uses first and kind of get out on the table, you know, who has to be here, maybe Dave Greenbaum has to be here as well. Maybe it needs to be a big old meeting so we hear what, if there are concerns from enforcers in town, what those concerns are. But by, and then we can deal with the other stuff, you know, as you were saying before. Chair Stott, it was, it's kind of like, where do we start? I think for me, it might be, it might be, we might just dig into some of those uses. Thanks, I was rambling. Thank you.
Counselor Dominguez and Counselor Varela?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Scott, I wanted to add just a little beyond what Counselor Watsonville just say, and I think is very important, but I think it's also necessary for us to make a very clear picture of the balance that we need to have in the city in terms of we creating, we allow things to happen in one side, but the other side, we need, we had the commercial and business people established already. So we don't want it to make anything that's maybe in a way that they might be in disadvantage. So we need to make sure that we create something that is balanced. And that's why, that was one of my questions when I asked, is there any cities and towns who have any type of limit on what type of businesses they can have? But I had the answer that it's not possible to happen. But I think that we as a city, we can prevent not to hurt the business community, because I think that in one aspect, we see, that's why we create zoning, that's why we're creating so many other things that balance what we do. So in that regard, we need to find some type of formula, because if we allow the, everybody to have a business or small businesses anywhere, the business community is going to be damaged by what we're doing here. So my point to this is that let's try to find something to balance the equation. Thank you.
Counselor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Stott. So through you to answer some of Counselor Dominguez's questions. You know, when it comes to what we're talking about, the intent of home occupation, it's always going to be an incidental use to the primary use. So as far as it affecting our businesses, I think that'd be fairly insignificant. And furthermore, I think it'd actually do the opposite. It'd actually promote people coming into Salem to actually support our businesses, because they might be able to utilize another amenity. One thing that I wanted to mention, when it comes to home occupation, it should always be about protecting our neighbors and residents. One thing that I found really compelling and interesting in language was the city of Everett. They actually put in some points. They said, "The need to guarantee existing residential property owners' freedom from excessive noise, excessive traffic, nuisance, fire hazard, and other possible adverse effects from commercial type activities." They also furthermore go on to say that, "The fact that the nature of the investment or operation of some activities have pronounced tendency towards starting to rapidly decrease beyond the limits permitted and hereby impair the value of residentially zoned areas for the purposes and the city's obligation to protect the integrity of its residential areas from activities that detract from residential character of the neighborhood and infringe upon the rights of the neighborhood." I really think that when we're crafting this ordinance, we'll be able to do that, because it's always going to be about what is the primary use? People live in these districts, and we need to make sure that we stay true to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, I guess, provide a few comments, too. First, I'm going to take an easy one. I totally agree that, like, Mr. Greenbaum, traffic and parking, Board of Health, all of those departments do need to come in to provide their feedback. I would, I think it would be better for us to know where we stand and where we want to be and present to them that, and then get their feedback on it, as opposed to inviting them all in and say, what's your thought? Because we will end up with 20 versions, like we have so far. So I think we've learned from that, that as a council is a body here, we can come up with a draft and then, and then provide it for some tweaking and feedback. But I definitely agree that the conversation should include many. Around the business community, I mean, these are small businesses. I think anybody that owns a business started somewhere, and they might have started out of the garage. So this is kind of what we want to foster and help. I don't think it will hurt the existing businesses. I mean, I think if anything, it's kind of like our on deck for our businesses that are going to retire, you know, we'll have some that are growing and incubating in their own homes. So I think it's definitely something that every community needs, and is only a positive for the community and for the businesses in general. Comments about parking and nuisances and all of that, I just want to throw out there. I get a little nervous about really making that restrictive or too limited, because I feel like that would narrow out more than 50% of our city or our population, and I don't think that that's equitable at all, and I think it makes it much more complicated and just limits who can have this ability or who can do this, do a home occupation out of their home. I think of entire neighborhoods that have resident-only parking, we would not want to say, oh, you can't have a home occupation that might have somebody come once a week because you have no off-street parking. That's probably 50% of our population has no off-street parking. That number I'm pulling out. Like, I don't really know what the actual number is. Traffic and parking could probably provide that feedback when we... But I want to throw that out there. Like, I don't want to be, I want this to be something that will help our residents grow. I want this to be something that is a positive and not, we're continuing, you know, by requiring four off-street parking spots for a barber shop, that just is only allowing those that have giant lots with four off-street parking spots to continue to grow their giant lots and continue to be prosperous while someone else doesn't have that available to them. And I just, I don't know, that doesn't seem correct to me, or it doesn't seem like it would be the spirit of the ordinance. The operators and employees, I'm actually, I could go either way on that. If it's just residents, or perhaps, I don't think we should go any further than one, maybe two employees that don't live within the, in the unit. I think that that definitely will drive the, or cross the, whether it's an accessory use or not. And then the square foot usage, I think that was the one thing that most of the surrounding towns did have in common, was the percent of usage. Most of them were 25%. I mean, if we feel that that might be too restrictive, like I'm thinking maybe like an artist studio loft where they need like giant rooms for paintings or something. Maybe we have some sort of avenue for those to then go down, or that's when they go to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit if they need more than 25%. But providing that avenue to be able to do that, I think, would be helpful. And then the last comment about the, actually, two more comments, sorry, jumping ahead. Listing the uses, we tried to do that, and then that we might just like continually get different uses and different business types, and that might be like a tale that we're constantly trying to chase to make sure that we have everyone covered. I mean, there might be a way that we can write it and say, these uses are prohibited, and we know those are prohibited, and we can add to that. But by actually listing the ones that are allowed might get us in a pickle that we're just constantly updating this, because times... just constantly updating this, because times, they are changing constantly. And then the last piece about the nuisances and complaint process, you know, I do, I do agree that we need to have some sort of enforcement and follow-up and make sure that the neighborhoods are intact and continue to stay primarily residential neighborhoods. But I, I wouldn't want to turn a complaint process into the current ZBA process, where a group of neighbors can pile on against another one. So I would want to be very, very careful or draft that cautiously, and I would be hesitant to fully support anything like that right away, unless if I was sure that it wouldn't just be moving one problem from one spot over to another spot. So those are kind of my initial comments that I have after listening now. I have some online participants with their hand raised, or do I have you to 7:15? Okay. Okay. So I do see that there are a few out in Zoomland, or there's one member out in Zoomland with their hand raised. Counselor Marcelo, if you wanted to make a comment, sorry that I just noticed your hand was raised.
Oh, thank you. I wanted to underscore the equity consideration also. I attended the Italian flag raising in November, and afterwards, some people that used to live in that neighborhood, Margin Street, Summer Street, they were, they were telling me all sorts of stories about growing up in the neighborhood, families, immigrant families. And the one, the one story that they all latched onto was the woman who had the hairdresser business in her house, and everyone went there to get their hair cut. And this was like a very special memory for them, and immigrant neighborhoods tend to do that, right? They, they tend to start small businesses in their homes and take care of their community in the neighborhood. And so the parking restriction, we do, I agree, we need to be really careful with that. If you're talking about a neighborhood where you're servicing the neighborhood and people are walking, then adding a parking restriction will, will disallow that business from starting, and that person from being able to start, start something that could grow and then go off into a standalone business somewhere. And, and so I, we would just really need to be careful when we're talking about all sorts of restrictions and things that will push the use of these, of this home occupation to the more residential suburban neighborhoods in the city, and disclude the inner, the inner-city part, the, the central part of the city, where there aren't driveways, there is no off-street parking, there is no option for that, and they could not guarantee a spot in a, in a public parking lot. So those are my, those are my concerns, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marcelo, Counselor Watsonfeld?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I wanted to just actually agree with that statement with regards to parking restrictions, specifically. I think we have a couple of different issues. First of all, there are office buildings in and adjacent to the downtown in Ward 2 that do not have off-street parking and are service-oriented, and the way that those businesses handle that is to kind of just give their, you know, their, their clients a map of where the nearest, you know, open parking areas are. So I think it's doable, right? Like, it's already happening. And I would agree, from an equity perspective, it would severely limit our denser neighborhoods. I, there was another comment I wanted to make. So I'm, I'm all for having further conversation around, around those restrictions, the parking restrictions. Operators, I agree with your comment. Square foot, part of my comment before around having folks come to the table before we come up with a draft, is because I think I have some questions around what would be a problem with X, you know, Y, Z, and so maybe it's just more homework that has to be done on, on my end around, you know, you know, what, why the square footage restrictions, what, you know, what are the health concerns if we were to, you know, to allow certain uses? I agree with you that I would rather, I would favor more inclusive language and around uses and just less prohibited uses, really specifically, or if there were specific uses where there was specific requirements. And I am, you know, and to Counselor Marcelo's story and point, I absolutely agree. I think there's already a lot of that already happening. So in our, in our, it has always been that way, you know, in neighborhoods where folks are providing services in their home, it's still happening. I know that it's still happening. And I think I would also favor something that Counselor Cohen had suggested earlier, which is just a registration process, so that we can kind of track what those uses are and track where those businesses are, and, and just gather some data around it, so that we can be sure that, that whatever we design, you know, is, is inclusive. If we needed to expand or make edits or changes, and just to track how it's going, you know, to that, to that same point, just gather that data. I think that's my only comments at this point. I guess my open question, just because I know you and I have talked about my needing to leave at some point, but I would love to better understand what our immediate next steps are before, you know, what should we be doing between now and when we reconvene on this topic in the new year? If there is homework, please tell me, in case I have to step out. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Watsonfeld. And I will note, we're coming up on the top of the hour, so we're going to be switching over to claims shortly. And I do, there is a member of the audience as well, the public, that is looking to speak, and I am going to allow former Counselor Mador to speak, please, the original submitter. So I'm excited to hear your feedback, Counselor Mador.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Through you, thank you. I really appreciate all the research that Counselor Varela has done and presented tonight, and all the thoughtful discussion that has taken place so far. I'm really grateful that this is still, continues to be discussed even this, at this late time of the year, rather than just taking on a holiday break. But I did want to make a couple of points after listening to your discussion, the committee discussion, that it's really easy to lose sight of why this ordinance amendment, zoning ordinance amendment was filed in the first place. The intent was just to make the process really simplified, and I'm hearing a lot of, "Oh, how should we regulate the number of businesses? How do we regulate the nature of the business? And how do we further restrict parking?", so on and so forth. But I just want to kind of bring everyone back and remind folks that the reason why this was triggered for the permit seekers who, well, kind of really, the motivation for me to file this was that they were looking to expand the footprint of their business within their own home, and that required adding specific square footage in their home, and that's why this had gone to ZBA. If they were functioning, operating their business within a space that is already existing in their home, then it's very likely they wouldn't even think about filing this, through the ZBA, which we have, I'm sure, hundreds, if not thousands, of examples, where a lot of people are already working at home with a range of different kinds of businesses and never even gave this a second thought, that they would have to go to ZBA to get a special license or certificate from the city clerk to run their business, that they were just, you know, carving out maybe five square feet to have their office desk and run their business from there. So I just want to remind you, the council, that it's really when people want to build more space for their business that this would go before the ZBA. And so when you talk about regulating the nature of businesses through this ordinance, that really has several serious equity considerations, because you get into the question of, well, which types of businesses should be regulated? We already heard barber shop, seamstress, I don't know what else was brought up, but when you're talking about specific occupations, then you really kind of need to think about, why are we picking on these specific occupations or businesses, right? So really just want to kind of ground you a little bit and think about what would trigger someone to go before the ZBA to seek the special permit, which my original intent is that if they meet all the requirements that are currently laid out in our zoning ordinance, then it shouldn't be a special permit. It should just be a simple kind of administrative by right process, rather than going this very resource, time, financially difficult process, and then have ultimately the threat of a neighbor appealing the decision. It's just, it wouldn't even actually help us grow in the business community if someone would like to start maybe just maybe online business from their own home, and if they want to have a little additional office in the back porch or something like that. So it would actually hurt us. What was the other point I want to make? I forgot. But I just want you guys to maybe try and think about not making a mountain of a mole hill, mole hill here. Really, it's about the square footage of your home and what that entails. If it's just one employee or just the business owner themselves, then maybe don't make this such a huge hurdle for anyone who just wants to start a business. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you. Counselor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I'm assuming you're looking for a motion. Before that, I want to make a real quick comment about the traffic and parking. Concerning language, it can be very simple. No traffic shall be generated in greater volume than would normally be expected in a residential neighborhood. So language like that makes it very simple. Is one home occupation in a neighborhood really going to throw off the traffic in a neighborhood? I do not believe so. You can't restrict having a party at your home or having guests over. So for me, it really is simple that it's, it's, you know, respectfully being mindful of your neighbors, but if you're having one person by appointment, or two or three, it could be deemed reasonable concerning traffic and parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Presnuski also has his hand raised, so I'd like to provide him the opportunity to make a comment as well. And just one moment, Counselor, I will make a comment for next steps on this, in case Counselor Watsonfeld needs to step out. So next steps are, there's kind of a core group that are taking this and writing some suggested language. We have a lot of backup documentation or research that has been done in our OLA folder for home occupation, so you can definitely check that out. There are some great articles from planning that Amanda put in there. That's where all the data that was part of the presentation that is. So if anything, I would say, check that out, read those articles, and look at the data that we have in there. There's also a sheet in there, tracker, that has a list of all the permits that have been issued by the ZBA, so it gives you kind of an idea of what people are asking for. So when you meet again, it'll be a little more background to that. And then Counselor Presnuski, if you have a comment or question?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Just a thought on the process. Thank you, Chair Watsonfeld. As we progress through this conversation and through the process of fine tuning this ordinance, I think we have to take into consideration that the residents of that neighborhood where the business is going to be, that they get involved early in the process. There is no, there is no one-size-fits-all for the city. There are many different types of businesses, and there are many different types of neighborhoods. And nobody knows their neighborhoods better than the residents who live in that neighborhood, and those are the people that we should be listening to early on to see what their concerns are, what they consider to be the impacts of a business opening up in their neighborhood. So I'm just suggesting that somewhere in the process that the residents, the abutters, get involved in the process early on. Thank you.
Thank you, Conrad. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Being respective of the time, I'm going to move that we keep this in committee, since this was a really good discussion, and I think it's giving us a lot of information for when we have a, you know, the meeting about this in 2023. So I move that we keep this in committee.
Counselor Cohen moved to keep this in committee. Seconded by Counselor Varela and Chair?
Thank you, Chair. This meeting was, I just a point of clarification, this could be my limited understanding. This is a co-posted with the hall, and so when something is being moved to stay in committee, does it stay in OLA, or does it stay in OLA and committee of the hall? So it's the second, or?
So it's, it's OLA. So it's just OLA, but it's co-posted with committee of the hall that they'll invite. So it'll be the same order that continues to stay?
Continue, so we will continue to be co-posted when we meet on this matter. Thank you.
We'll do a roll call vote, since Counselor Presnuski is remote. So Counselor Cohen moved to keep this in committee. Seconded by Counselor Varela. Any further discussion? No? Counselor Cohen?
My last vote, being the first person to vote, I'm handing that off to Counselor Watsonfeld for next year voting yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Presnuski?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so 5-0, that will stay in committee. We still have some votes on claims in a minute, so. Okay, thanks, everyone. So that wraps up the home occupation item for this evening. We are then going to move on to claims. So thanks, everyone, for joining that conversation that we just had. This next item is for just the OLA committee to review the claims that we have within our docket, try to clean that up for next year. So we have Ms. Rumi from the City of Salem that has joined us. Thank you so much for joining and for providing the feedback on the list that has, of the claims that have been submitted.
I used to be here.
Thank you. And if it would be helpful, I guess, Joanne, are you able to share your screen, or would it be easier if I shared my screen?
Yeah, I should be able to share my screen. Let me see if you guys can see it now.
Yes. Perfect.
I'm trying to think which one I used to share. So let me just, I don't know if I'm sharing it twice.
No, we can, we-
Can you see my screen?
Yep, we can see, we can see it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so I think-
So you said you were going to read them, and then?
Yeah, we can just go down the list. So the first item that we have in front of us, number 365, this was actually one that we had two held over from our last meeting. This first one, I believe, was held over at the request from Counselor Varela. It was a damaged tire on a pothole on Swampscott Road. Mia denied this item. It was $87.04. The denial from the legal opinion was no notice of defect. If I recall, this was digging pretty far back, it was something about how the pothole, you feel that there were a bunch around there or something, and they may have been reported. Not sure. Counselor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Stott, if I may. Yeah, I was more looking into the issue of being an underlying issue of that part of the road having a bigger concern. At this time, it seems like those have been addressed, and I haven't seen any more claims come up in that part of Swampscott Road, so at this time, I think we should deny.
Okay. Counselor Varela moves to deny 365. Any further discussion? Any second on that? Seconded by Domingo? Okay. I'll just go through and make notes at the end, unless if there's any discussion points, if there's discussion on one, we'll vote on one specific, okay? Does that sound good? Okay, the second one was another one that was held over from the last meeting, number 366, Justin Messino of 61 North Street. This was the one where a parking sign fell on the hood of his car in the South Harbor Garage. Mia denied this one. And Joanne, if you might, I know you sent an email with some details around this one about the follow-up that was done by Ms. Renaud after the meeting. Could you just, I don't have that in front of me. Could you read what was?
Yep, sure. So the city posted this sign warning that the city is not responsible for damage or vandalism, and that drivers pocket their own risk, and the city is not liable for damage to vehicles inside its garage. Also, the city did not receive any reports or defects or damage to the sign, and there's no showing that the city was negligent in failing to repair a defective or dangerous sign. So based upon the inspection of the vehicle in the sign at the time of the incident, the cause of the damage to the sign was most likely the result of vandalism. So we even spoke to Alan Sullaway, who is a parking person that, and they, they, and he further investigated it and said that the signs inside the South Harbor Garage are observed on a regular basis by city employees, and city employees are at the garage at least once a day to check on the reserved spaces that the signs indicate, in the signs indicate, ticking and toe, along with the reserved space number. So- So in conclusion, they said the claimant has a reserved space in the garage and his space has a sign mounted on the wall. When the incident was first reported, Alan Sullaway observed the scratch marks on the hood of the car and noted that the sign looked like it had been forced off the wall. He also observed that the sign on the wall at the neighboring space was bent, but still a tat. So the solicitor recommended denying the claim because there was no notice of defect.
Great, thank you. So it sounds like it was possible vandalism from?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the committee? Any motions to possibly deny or? Counsel Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I move that we deny this claim.
Any discussion on that one or conflict? No? Okay. The next item we have is 64 Bridge Street. This one, number 588. Counsel Cohen?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. 64 Bridge Street was a sewer backup. Mia actually paid this one, so that can just be discharged from the committee unless if there's any disagreement. Yep.
Can we just for clarification, maybe hear what's going on here because I had no idea. The amount is so big, $31,000.
Yep, so it was, it was a sewer backup at 64, 65 Bridge Street. Mia did investigate and Mia, our insurance agency, and they actually paid the claim. So it was city fault and the owner was reimbursed via our insurance. Is that correct, Joanne?
Yes, they did a release of claim and there was a settlement for $31,284.81.
Great. Next item that we have is 591. Ms. Roberts, damaged tire on Congress Street from a piece of metal. Mia did deny this. It looked like there was no notice of defect or metal in the road for the amount of $293.74. Counsel Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I move that we deny this claim.
Counsel Verella moves we deny, seconded by Counsel Dominguez. Any further discussion? No? Okay, next item that we have is number 620. Mr. Justin Parsons, towed from resident parking and has a parking pass. It looks like the city clerk did dismiss this ticket. So the ticket in tow is up to Ola, $204.05. The parking clerk dismissed the ticket, so I don't think we have to reimburse the ticket cost. It would just be the tow fee. Counsel Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam. Chair Scott, basically, I just wanted to make a comment in regard to, this is Halloween season and we, I don't know if anyone has so many calls during that period of time with the same issue, which I think we need to do something for next year. Based on the fact that we put the resident sticker in different area, the resident or resident don't have no place to park. Happened to me a couple of times because I don't have resident sticker to be in any neighborhood and my car need to be parked because it's Halloween. Where are we going to go? Where we park? We have, we have local businesses. We have family to visit. We had so many things. So in regard to anyone doing this period of time, especially this year where we have record numbers, we need to find a solution for this and not in favor or any, anything that had to deal with, with that period of time to be charged on the residents. We need to make sure to find a way to help them out. So I know that city clerk already waived the ticket. But what's going to happen with the big chunk of the towing, which is a $217?
That reimbursing the tow would be up to Ola if we wanted to do that. Do you make a motion to reimburse the tow?
Yes, I would do, make a motion to reimburse.
Okay. And then just for clarification of the comment that you made, you don't feel that residents should pay any parking tickets even if they're not in a resident parking zone?
My point, Madam Chair, if we had record numbers of visitors like we did in the last period of time, we don't have no place to park. The resident don't have no place to park during that, during regular days. For example, if I go to visit some of my relatives in another neighborhood, I don't have no way to park, especially those residents are not permitted ticket only in a regular time. It's being placed that way because of the Halloween. For example, Bridge Street is not a resident ticket only. During the Halloween season, it was only, it was put it that way so no one can park in front of anybody's house because it was resident ticket and the police came and give the ticket no matter what. Because even though they are local, the plate doesn't say that they live right over there. They live nearby or whatever place they need to live.
So the Halloween parking, I mean, it's not, I just wanted to understand what you were saying. So you don't feel that even if the resident doesn't live in the areas that would afford them a resident parking pass, they should be able to park there and have passes? I would just comment that make sure you provide that feedback to the Traffic and Parking Department?
I did already.
Because they're the ones that provide that setup. But also, the Halloween parking is, I think it's just weekends and it's evenings. So it is limited. It's not 24/7. So it's certain hours that it's required for that special orange, was it orange? It might have been green this year pass. I just wanted to clarify what that was saying. So you make a motion to pay for Mr. Parsons' the tow of $204.05, seconded by Counsel Cohen? I'm sorry, Counsel Verella? Any further discussion? No? Okay, number 672, Jennifer Smith from Smithfield, Rhode Island. Her car was ticketed and towed because she was parked in a crosswalk. Looks like she was not parked in a crosswalk and the parking clerk did dismiss the ticket. So the tow is up to us, which is $175.03. Any motions? Counsel Cohen?
I move that we pay the tow.
Second.
Okay, Counsel Cohen moves that we pay the tow, seconded by Counsel Dominguez. Any further discussion? Okay. Next item is for Michael Mulray, number 673. Car was towed from Museum Place Garage from his own reserved spot. He forgot to hang his placard from his mirror. Ticket in tow up to Ola, so he believes he should not, he believes he should have been notified not towed. Officer didn't check with the office to verify plate at space number 18. This one's tricky. So it was his own spot, but he didn't have his pass in there. I would say that if it wasn't him and somebody else in there, he would want that car to be towed. So it's a tricky one. Counsel Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Yeah, this is a very difficult one. I really believe that, I think it's, it's possible that we honor the settle for 50%. Not only is it, you know, it costs resources and money for the city to tow vehicles, although it was possibly the fault of Mr. Mulray not to put up his, his pass. You know, it could have been, it's his spot, so it could have been another car. So I do believe we should reimburse 50% of the ticket.
I second that.
Counsel Verella moves to reimburse 50, seconded by Counsel Dominguez. And Counsel Presnisky, I'm sorry, your hand is raised. I don't know if it's been raised for a while if you want us to make a comment previously. Feel free to just jump in with any comments you might have. I had my screen down and I didn't see your hand up.
I'm sorry, I did forget to lower it. You guys are doing a good job.
Okay, thank you. I am going to take a vote on this one to pay 50%. Any further discussion on this one? Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez?
Yes.
Counsel Verella?
Yes.
Counsel Presnisky?
Yes.
Okay, and myself is a yes, so we will settle for the $106.50. Okay, next one is Mr. Arubian, number 674. Ticket in tow in a residential parking only spot without a residential parking sticker. The claim was reviewed and the ticket was upheld. I'm going to see if there's anything that you wanted to add to that, Joanne?
No. Solicitor Renaud said to, she recommended denying it.
Okay, was ticketed and towed from October resident-only parking spot on Andrews Street. He has access to parking passes in the South Harbor garage, which was full. Had to look for alternative parking spot. It was clearly marked resident only with no indication that a sticker was needed. Seeking reimbursement for ticket in tow. Counsel Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I move that we deny this claim.
Counsel Verella moves that it's denied, seconded by Counsel Cohen. Any further discussion? No? Okay. We'll move on to Sandoval, number 676. Johanna, vehicle parked in front of owner's residence. Parking sticker in vehicle, vehicle was ticketed and towed. The parking clerk dismissed the ticket, so it's up to Ola to pay, reimburse for the tow. Counsel Dominguez?
I move that we pay this towing.
Counsel Dominguez moves that we pay the $174.99 for towing.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Verella. Any discussion? Okay. Next, we have number 677, Peter Capra. 13 Essex Street in Salem. Construction crews damaged a brick, brick wall, driveway and sidewalk. The total claim was for $11,000. Mia did deny this and legal department is requesting that this is discharged and referred to Tascow Construction. Joanne, do you have anything further to add to that one?
Well, no. Actually, Maya did that too. They said to contact Tascow Construction because they believe it was their fault. So the claimant should deal directly with Tascow. And they wrote them a letter and gave them their phone number and their address and who to contact.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Cohen?
Move to discharge.
Counsel Cohen moves to discharge. So seconded by Counsel Dominguez. Any further discussion? Okay, next item, 678, Christos Papas from Baltimore. His car was ticketed and towed on Clifton Ave. Legal opinion is to deny as the ticket was towed. I am going to assume with a Maryland address, they are not a resident. Counsel Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Stott. This person, to get to the parking spot, drove through a barricade labeled, "Road Closed, Resident Parking Only." So I move vehemently to deny.
Second.
Counsel Cohen moves to deny, seconded by Counsel Dominguez. Any further discussion? Yeah, he's going to go visit the Hocus Pocus house, like in the movie. Okay, we'll deny next item. Number 679, Ellen, 54 Reddington Street and Swamp Scott, ticket in towed in front of a sign, no non-resident parking. Legal opinion is that the parking clerk did dismiss this ticket and that we pay the tow fee of $108. Counsel Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I move that we pay for the tow fee.
Counsel Verella moves that we pay the tow fee.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Dominguez. Any further discussion? Okay. 727, Maria Carney on Margin Street. Vehicle parked in front of owner's residence. Vehicle was ticketed and towed. Resident applied for parking sticker but never received it. The ticket was voided, so the legal recommendation is to pay the tow fee to $44.05. Counsel Dominguez?
I move that we pay.
Excuse me, they wanted to just pay the tow of $169.05.
Oh, thank you.
There was never a ticket given.
Oh, then there was never a ticket. Thank you. So Counsel Dominguez.
They voided the ticket.
Okay. Counsel Dominguez moves to pay the $169.05.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Verella. Okay. Next item, 728, Mr. Kokozella of Brentwood Ave. Sewer backed up into basement through the washing machine due to blocked sewer pipe in middle of street causing damage to wall carpeting. The claim was for $5,000. It looks like Mia paid, so the recommendation is, or need is to discharge this one. Counsel Cohen?[1531.98]